Need change there, put Eddie on there.
Mr. Buckner?
Mr. Buckner.
Say here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
I'm here too.
Mr. Rowley?
Here.
Mayor Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Please stand in the location to pledge tonight, given my council member Buddy Rowley Jr.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another day in your gift of life. Father, we pray your wisdom as we go about the business of the city, as we go about finding a new city manager. We just pray for all your guidance in that. Father, tonight I lift up a few people, not by name, you know who they are, that are very ill at this time, and I just pray you'll be with them, comfort them, and their families. Again, be with us in this meeting as we go about the business of the city and to find citizens of Danville. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley. Under communication, just reminder to everyone in the council rules, public comment period, ten minutes allowed for a group presentation, one spokesperson. If they speak for the group, please ask the group to stand and be identified. If they wish to speak individually, they will have five uninterrupted minutes to do so, so at this time, those who desire to speak in any matter not on the agenda will be heard at this time. If you wish to speak on any genuine item, will be heard when items is considered. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir. Come forth, please. And your name.
I am representing the Heritage Preservation Association tonight. Americans who have any sense of the world's history admire the Scottish people.
Excuse me, sir. Your name, please.
Oh, Ed Clark.
Thank you.
Glenn Scares. The English finally beat them down at Falkirk, but they wouldn't want a rematch today, I assure you. Southerners feel an unconscious affinity for fighting people who scream as they fight and die willingly. The Scots have lived as rebels with a lost cause for centuries. Southerners as rebels with such a cause for a century and a half, and when the English go to war even today, they want the Scots, just like the American armies and navies want men and women from the South. We're told that most of the medals of honor have been awarded to Southern Americans. It's no surprise, south of the Mason-Dixon line. On September 4th, the English apparently found the skull of William Wallace, and two of his rebel Scots, John and Simon Fraser. The DNA test established that they are brothers, and all three were drawn and quartered as rebels. Their heads were exposed at the same time atop the London Bridge. The government denied it, but they had the very best, but only because they defended the power of government. We Southerners, at least some of us, remember that feeling very well. We gave the very best soldiers, sailors, marines, and cavalrymen, and it is not an inconvenient memory, indeed today is an inconvenient memory, indeed today, for the government. It does not deter the Scots, and it does not deter those of us who remember, and who stand for our people and the right, as God gives us the ability to see the right. Something William Faulkner, a Southerner, put it this way. Some things you must always be unable to bear, some things you must never stop refusing to bear. Injustice, outrage, dishonor, and shame. No matter how young you are or how old you got, no kudos, and not for cash. Your picture in the paper, nor money in the back either, just refuse to bear them. For every Southern boy fourteen years old, not once, but whenever he wants to, there is the instant, when it is still not yet two o'clock on that July afternoon in 1863, the brigades are in position behind the rail fence, the guns are laid and ready in the woods, the furled flags are ready loosened to break out, and Pickett himself with his oil ringlets, his hat in one hand probably, and his sword in the other, looking up the hill, waiting for Longstreet to give the word, and it's all in the balance. It hasn't happened yet. It hasn't even begun yet. It not only hasn't begun yet, but there is still time for it not to begin against that position and those circumstances. Which made more men than Garnet, Kemper, Armstead, and Wilcox look grave, yet it's going to begin, and we all know that we have come too far with too much at stake. Who could have predicted that in Danville, Virginia, home of the last Confederate capital, that it would have been July 3rd, 1863, all over again? That the whole city council, only two, Fred Shanks and Buddy Rowley, pulled the case from the flag of our history and stood up. They defended her to a hostile, scuffing foe like John and Simon Fraser, and like William Wallace. They knew that they would pay a price for standing up, and they did it anyway. I need some hand lotion. And like the brothers, Fraser brothers, these two men became our brothers. We recognize courage when we see it, and we just want them to know, it does not matter if we are outnumbered, it matters that we stand up for all our people, and that includes the blood of our ancestors. We thank you, and we honor you. Do not stop now, and do not back up. Thank you.
Thank you.
The William Wallace Award is not given out very often, I believe. The last time was over twenty years ago, by the Heritage Preservation Association. Sir William Wallace Award, to all who shall witness these presents, know ye that Buddy Rollins and Frank Shanks III are present for the dedication of this award for untiring defense of Southern heritage, facing both the bigotry of the enemies and the trepidite of their friends. And witness thereof, the proper signature and seal of honor is hereupon placed, given in Danville this fifteenth day of September, the year of our Lord, 2015.
Now, Mr. Shanks is not here, but he will become later on tonight, just for your information. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak? Thank you. Is the motion approved by minutes of August 18, 2015? Mr. Campbell, is there a second? And Mr. Buckner, discussion in the motion. Please call the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Consideration of budget amendment items D through D have been previously discussed by City Council, introduced for first reading, further consent to the council in public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, we know separate discussion on these items, and they will be enacted by one motion. Discussion desired by a council member or citizen, the item will be removed from the consent process and considered separately. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Counsel your pleasure. Mr. Gilstrap?
Just may I move adoption of the consent agenda items B through D.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor. All right, discussion in the motion. I'm sorry, no discussion. Please call the roll.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Federation adopting a new comprehensive plan for the year 2030 of the city of Danville, Virginia. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Counsel your pleasure, Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance receiving the recommendation of the Planning Commission in adopting a new comprehensive plan for the year 2030 for the city of Danville, Virginia.
Okay, is there a second? And Mr. Campbell, discussion in the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Federation adopting of approving resolution for state transit funding for fiscal year 2016. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adopting ordinance, residence authorized application by the city to the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for grants for operating and capital costs for public transportation for fiscal year 2016.
Is there a second? And Mr. Buckner, discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Federation approving a resolution for federal transit assistance for fiscal year 2016. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Counsel your pleasure. Mr. Vogler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution confirming and ratifying the filing of an application by the city of the U.S. Department of Transportation for a grant under the Federal Transit Act as amended.
Is there a second? Mr. Vice Mayor, discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Federation adopting an ordinance to rezonate property on Jefferson and Pine Streets. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Counsel your pleasure, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the year 2020 land use plan from CS Community Service to DM Downtown, mixed use and rezoning from OT-R Old Town Residential to CB-C Central Business Commercial at 400 Jefferson Street and 806 Pine Street.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Buckner, discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Federation adopting an ordinance to rezonate property on Jefferson Avenue and Jefferson Street. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Counsel your pleasure, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I move adopt an ordinance rezoning from conditional CB-C Central Business Commercial to CB-C Central Business Commercial at parcel IDs 22972, 22969, 22966, 22971, 22970, 22968, 24730, collectively known as 254 Jefferson Avenue and 406 Jefferson Street.
Is there a second? Mr. Rowley, discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Federation adopting an ordinance to allow urban agriculture on Moffitt Street. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Counsel your pleasure. Mr. Gilstrap?
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of an ordinance granting a special use permit to allow for urban agriculture in accordance with Article 3 E, Section C, item 28 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended on parcel IDs numbers 03655, 03657, 03659, and 03660 on Moffitt Street.
Is there a second, Mr. Buckner? Discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
And Federation adopting an ordinance to make amendments that comply with 2015 code changes. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Counsel your pleasure. Counsel your pleasure. And Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move adopt an ordinance amending chapter 41 entitled zoning ordinance of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986 as amended, more specifically, Article 15 entitled definitions, section B entitled definitions to amend the definition variance, Article 13 entitled Board of Zoning Appeals, variances, special exceptions, and appeals, section F entitled variances to address changes in state code.
Is there a second? Mr. Vogler? Discussion on the motion.
I have a question.
Mr. Gilstrap? Mr. Gilstrap?
And I guess I'll address this to Mr. Larkin, but this is a 2015 code change. It taken us, what, eight months to identify that code change and get it to council?
I'd like Kenny to answer that question.
It became effective in July, when the new state law came in. Since it became effective at that point, we couldn't really change it when advertised.
How long have we known about the change?
We just knew it was going to become effective July.
Okay.
The state had worked on it, and it went back and forth on whether they were going to do it or not. Members of our Board of Zoning Appeals, the city wasn't necessarily in favor of the change, but the state adopted it, so once it became effective, then we had to change our laws.
Thank you. Thank you. Further discussion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Federation adopting an ordinance to amend the FY 2016 budget for the Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. Counsel your pleasure, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue from the Department of Criminal Justice Services, Byrne Justice Assistant Grant, awarded to the Commonwealth of Virginia Office of Attorney General for implementation of the Danville Crime Reduction Program, a city of Danville, in an amount of $125,000, to be used to fund the salary and benefits of a crime analyst, directed patrol overtime, travel, and training, equipment, and supplies. First reading.
Is there a second, Mr. Buckner? Discussion on the motion? First reading. Federation adopting an ordinance to amend FY 2016 budget for the alcohol grant program. Mr. Gilstrap?
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of ordinance amending the fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenues from the Department of Motor Vehicles, Highway Safety, Selective Enforcement Alcohol Grant Program in an amount of $11,130, and appropriating the same. First reading.
Okay, is there a second, Mr. Jones? Discussion on the motion? First reading. Federation adopting an ordinance to amend FY 2016 budget for the special correction for the speed grant program. Counsel your pleasure. And Mr. Jones? Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adopting an order submitting the fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue from Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles, Highway Safety Office, Selective Enforcement, Speed Grant Program in an amount of $9,444, and appropriating the same.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Buckner? Discussion on the motion? First reading. Federation adopting an ordinance to amend FY 2016 budget for the Occupant Protection Grant. Mr. Vogler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue from Virginia Department of Motor Vehicle Highway Safety Office, Selective Enforcement, Occupant Protection Grant Program in the amount of $5,760, and appropriating the same. First reading.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Vice Mayor? Discussion on the motion? First reading. Federation adopting an ordinance to amend FY 2016 budget for the Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Counsel your pleasure. And Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue for fiscal year 2015 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant JAG, program in the amount of $19,028 to be used to purchase a DISC publisher device and associated system integration for both the Danville Police Department and the Office of the Commonwealth Attorney.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Mr. Rowley. Okay, before we continue, Chief Broadfoot, would you say a little bit about what this DISC publisher device is, sir, and what it means to Danville? Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The addition of body cameras to the Danville Police Department over the last four years has been a learning process, and when the video is captured, we have a contract with a private vendor to store it in the cloud. The problem arises when the Commonwealth attorney needs that video for court or to give to a defense attorney. Right now, downloading that from the cloud and making a copy is labor intensive and also time consuming, and this device will allow it to be done at warp speed, essentially, and will allow the Commonwealth attorney to make copies available for everyone that needs them in the prosecution of the case.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, first reading. Federation adopting resolution approving reports of delinquent and improperly assessed taxes for 2015. And Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution acknowledging receipt of an approving report dated August 31, 2015, of delinquent and improperly assessed taxes as of June 30, 2015, submitted to the council by the Director of Finance.
Second, Mr. Buckner? Discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Federation adopting an ordinance for the appropriation of bond proceeds. Counsel your pleasure. Appropriation of bond proceeds. Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adopting orders amending the fiscal year 2016 budget appropriate orders to provide proceeds from the sale of general obligation bonds of the fiscal year 2016, appropriating the same.
Is there a second, Mr. Gilstrap? Discussion on the motion? First reading. Federation of counseling a regular meeting of city councils scheduled for Tuesday, October 6, 2015, scheduling a special meeting, city council, Thursday, October 8, 2015, to permit members of council and staff to attend the Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution counseling a regular meeting of the city council scheduled for Tuesday, October 6, 2015, scheduling a special meeting of city council on Thursday, October 8, 2015.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Buckner? Discussion on the motion? And Mr. Vice Mayor?
Just a comment. Every year, many of us go to this VML convention. This is a very, very good meeting. We interact with other council people, other cities. We pick up a lot of good ideas, and some of them we've implemented here, so we're certainly not wasting our time or the taxpayer's money when we go to these meetings. We've gotten some very valuable input from other cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Please call the roll.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks? Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Communication, Mr. Larkin?
I have nothing this evening, sir, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Whitfield?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
And Mrs. DeMasi?
Nothing, sir.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
I'd just like to congratulate our George Washington Eagles on an outstanding win the other night to our rivals. When I was in school, apparently they're not much of a rival force anymore against DC Glass, and I'd like to thank everyone that made Shrimp Fest a huge success. It was a great turnout. Mr. Scares was there. Several of our people that are here tonight were there, so just like to thank those guys, and if you didn't make it this year, hopefully you can make it next. That's all for the night, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, I just want to commend also George Washington football team for beating DC Glass. Remember when I used to play the bench at George Washington? It was always a good rivalry. And on Saturday, it was a wonderful event at DCC with the young people ventilating for them to talk. A lot of the council people were there. You, Mr. Mayor, Alonzo, Lee Vogler was there, and I thought it was very, very good. We want to salute Alliance for Excellence and DCC, and also the leader of that group, Mr. Reginald Jeffries, for the hard work, and I hope that it's an annual affair. And we just hope that everybody would enjoy Danville. We're hearing so many good things about Danville moving forward, and would remind you about the Danville Fair to start us in a few more days. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
At the last council meeting, one of my friends said I had 236 things to say. I won't call him out, Bruce Hedrick, but I just want to also thank Ms. Sandy Saunders and members of Alliance for Excellence, Mr. Mayor. That event at DC hosting Reggie Jeffries and a number of young people and young adults. On that panel was superb. There were four city council members there, along with the mayor, two school board members there, the superintendent was there, and a host of parents and community people just listening to our young people. Just want to say that was just totally phenomenal, and I just want to thank everybody involved, and Lee did a fantastic job. And to the youth council, to hear about our youth council, I spoke with Mr. Bill Skrygina. Be on the lookout, because we got some great things, Ken, happening with our Danville Youth Council, so be on the lookout. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did I do okay, Bruce?
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yeah, it was a great Shrimp Fest this year. It's always, it's always good, and each year it gets better, so for those of you attended, you know, and try to get there next year if you didn't get there this year. Lot going on in downtown Danville. Sad note, as you noticed this week, the Eden Miller Brewery is closing over in Eden. 520 people out of work, and then there's an adjacent cannery factory that produces cans, 179 people are probably going to lose their jobs, so we offer our prayers. These are our neighbors. And indeed, what affects Eden affects the Danville area. Many of our friends and neighbors work in Eden, work at that brewery. People from Eden shop in Danville. It'll be a blow to our economy, but we and they, we will go on. We will get new industries in the mega park and in the surrounding area. We're not going to roll over, because we are indeed neighbors. We're friends with these people, and we're fellow residents of the South Side of Virginia and Piedmont, North Carolina. We're all interlocked together, and we also, we all need to keep going on. We get, we sustain a blow, but we get up, and we'll, we'll go on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Clark and Mr. Scares, I am overwhelmed, and I feel so inadequate to receive your award, but I thank you very much. Most people that know me know that I can talk to that wall and enjoy it, but you've, you've made me speechless. I can only thank you so much. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shanks?[1751.02]
Mr. Clark and Mr. Scares, I am overwhelmed, and I feel so inadequate to receive your award, but I thank you very much. Most people that know me know that I can talk to that wall and enjoy it, but you've, you've made me speechless. I can only thank you so much. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shanks?
Good afternoon.
Mr. Shanks, I'd like to make a presentation to you, Mr. Clark and Mr. Scares.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
We have missed you. We have for you here tonight, an award. It is the William Wallace Award from the Heritage Preservation Association. This award is not given out lightly. It's not given out very often. As I mentioned earlier, I think it's been over 20 years since anyone has received it. But to all those witness these presents, be it known that Buddy Rowley, Fred Shanks III has presented this award of untiring defense for Southern heritage, facing both the bigotry of our enemies and the trepidude of our friends. In witness thereof, the proper signature and seal of honor is hereupon placed, given in Danville this fifteenth day of September, the year of our Lord, 2015. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.